I'd like to call this a regular board meeting, March 31, 2025. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
I don't know.
The second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular figure 24 through 25 meeting. Do I hear a motion? You have a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Okay, board members, we have a few guests today. I would like our varsity cheerleaders to come up first. Coach Brown, you've got your assistants here with you as well.
Sure do.
Did I say that's you? Would you tell us who the team captains are?
Yes, I have three team captains. We have Lynn Stoffertgen and Julia Botnick and Campbell Sparks.
Okay. Captains, would you tell us what these medals represent?
Okay, well, we got second place this year in Nationals.
Nationals? All right. And before you did that, though...
We got first place.
You won the state championship. State champions, second place in Nationals.
Back-to-back state champions.
Back-to-back.
Yes. And then this year, we also placed first at all of our competitions that we went to. We went to the Mid-South Regional in Mississippi. We went to the Magic City Regional here in Birmingham, Alabama. And we went to the HSA Central Super Finals and state. You got anything else? And that's it. And we got first at all of them. So this is a record-breaking year, getting first at all of our competitions and then going down to Nationals and competing against 48 other teams and placing second. And just by one point. So very, very, very proud of these ladies.
Cheers, the sport really starts now.
Yes.
Building for next year. It's been all along. So it's like a really busy, dedicated, not only are they doing the competitive piece as well, they're cheering for Friday night.
Yes.
As well as the lot of time and effort that goes into this. I know very little about cheerleading, but I do decide to cheerleader, but I don't know anything about cheerleading. But I told my wife we recognized them tonight. I said, "Cheerleaders are really good." And she's a cheerleader from days ago. She said, "Yeah, they're really good. You must be really good." I want you to introduce yourself to everybody. Let's start down this direction and come this way.
Hi, I'm Lynn.
I'm Kate.
I'm Lily.
I'm Peyton.
I'm Campbell.
I'm Savannah.
I'm Nadine.
I'm Meredith.
Julia.
I'm Olivia.
I'm Courtney.
I'm Lynn.
I'm Riley.
I'm Allison.
I'm Elise.
I'm Rebecca.
I'm Grace.
I'm Campbell.
Good. Got picture. When they come to show up. Cool. Come to here with us. You want to try to hold her? Congratulations, ladies. Our coaches are here, but who have captains in the team?
Yeah, do. Grayson, Avery, and then Addison.
Grayson, would you tell us what the, what do we call it? Drift?
We won Nationals this year and we won state this year.
National champions.
State champions, third year in a row.
What an accomplishment. Again, another group starts right about now. Just the entire year, a full year of hard work. Really pays off. And y'all are such ambassadors for our school system and our community that we rely to need. So thank you guys for the hard work. Would you introduce yourself to everybody? Let's start with me.
I'm Caroline.
I'm Lily.
I'm Gavin.
I'm Reese.
I'm Evy.
I'm Addison.
I'm Stella.
I'm London.
I'm Cameron.
I'm Abigail.
I'm Addison.
I'm Peter Grace.
I'm Grayson.
I'm Paige.
I'm Lily Katie.
I'm Amelia.
I'm Claire.
I'm Baker.
I'm Stella.
I'm Emily.
I'm Avery.
Congratulations again, guys. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, thank you. You're welcome.
All right. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. You're welcome. All right. Thank you. All right. We're bowlers. Bowlers. All right. 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 I didn't give you a chance hiding back there, board members, from the cheerleaders. I'm sorry I didn't come and show you what I was doing. It's great. I sent them out.
Very impressed with y'all and all of your social media. It's great to be able to follow you through that. And we've got some great competition to make sprouts.
Well, then, appreciate you being ambassadors of the sport of bowling. You've helped a lot of people and the brand lives on. And thank you guys for working so hard. Huge accomplishment, one you'll always remember. One we get to remember each year when we see that, I think, Lou Trucking.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. Guess y'all walk this road.
Can I take a picture?
Oh, yeah.
All right, guys, stay there. And board members, if you'll stand up behind us. We don't want to leave y'all out. Deborah? I don't know. I don't see your mouth. No. 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 Whoa. I don't want to see him from the camera. It's weird. Yeah. I'm John. Thank you. Thank you, board members. Thank you. 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 All right.
Coach Miles, we had a lot of sports we recognized. Is there anything you can say overall about this?
Well, it's just a good thing they've got great coaches and we've got great kids. So they just keep on churning it out. And we've got great fans. It's it.
We do support all the ways. Robust and it's fantastic. And it helps to have the best athletic equipment in state of Alabama.
It does. It does.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things I want to say. One is I'm so impressed and we listen to what we want. Yeah, two to four by eight hundred. And as I recall, Coach Miles can correct me, but eight hundred is one of the hardest races because you're essentially sprinting for the half mile, which tells me our folks are incredibly mentally tough to do that. And I say that as somebody who played the sport where we were punished by running and these folks are up there doing it because they enjoy it. I had some comment from cheerleaders and I will embarrass my daughter Grace, because she's not here anymore. But if you've ever watched a cheer competition, I know I've been in carpool with some of the younger guys who like to say, "Oh, this is not really athletics." It is incredibly impressive what they do and what they're able to do when they get three to four minutes. There are no half times, there's no timeouts. You either get it done or you don't. And when it mattered, they got it done. I don't know that I've been as nervous watching this sport in that the varsity state championship show. Because I watched the girls warm up and every one of the groups fell at some point during their warmups. I just thought, "Oh, my gosh, they worked so hard." As Dr. Freeman said, "They work all summer, they work on breaks, it's nonstop." Here they are and they look awful in warmups. And they got out there when it mattered and nailed it. And I just think, not only physically gifted, but to have the mentality to win it mattered, to lock in and get it done, it's just so impressive. And I think that kind of speaks across the board for our athletic program. And I know we've got a approval that's coming up for us later in the meeting. I'm not looking forward to it because there's two retirements and we'll talk about one of them later, talk about one now. And we're not happy about the second retirement. Coach Miles, I know you've got other stuff to do, but thank you for what you've done over the last few years.
It's been a pleasure. It's been a true, this has been one of the best stops of my career. I mean it. I mean, I still get all emotional about it, but I think that's a good sign.
It is.
Been my best stops.
When we first heard, I think, the word that came across more often than the other was transformative. And I think it's true that what you've done has been a bridge from one group of Hall of Fame coaches to another group of coaches who I think will be all members. And we needed that bridge. And you stepped in and filled that gap and took us from the way that we've been doing things and been doing it successfully for decades to, you know, a new way of doing things and improvement, it can be just as successful. And I think transformative and doing it the right way. It's been incredible to watch. I've learned a lot about leadership, about just how you need to do things day after day, the intensive details. And you've made us better. And I think we are a better school, a better athletic program because of you here. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I had a ton of incredible help around me. I can't say enough about that. I can't thank y'all enough. I did not like writing my retirement letter to y'all, but it was short and sweet. This has been one of the most impactful stops in my journey. So I do have another something going, starting in August. So like I said, I'm never going to quit working. But I just can't thank y'all enough for everything. And I even enjoy messing with Mr. Boone. I'm going to miss him.
I'll make a couple of comments. Myra knows how to go about it, but we, looking ahead, the standard is set that we want to have, you know, for athletic department and for our overall experience of our students. And one of the things I most value is, while it's oftentimes unseen, when you look at the sports we have represented today, these are not sports that generate a lot of revenue. They don't generate a lot of publicity. There are not a lot of people that come to them, but they are as important as any event that we offer. And I can tell you unequivocally that that's the standard that Myra has set, that they're all important. And that's the standard that Blair will be looking for. She starts putting this process together in the next few weeks that we will be working on to bring to you a recommendation in April. But that standard is what we want to have, and I'm really appreciative of that. It just makes it seamless what we want to do because every child deserves the same kind of valued experience that we want to get, no matter what the sport is. So I'm really appreciative of that.
And Myra, when the position came open, I just remember going to Todd, "Do you know Myra Miles?" And it's just, it's, the stars aligned where you came to Vestavia and we're so fortunate. And I know you had other options and you chose us. And we're just, we're very grateful and couldn't be more delighted. Just not only the athletic program, but I, for one, my son and many others have taken part in the internships that you've created just within your department to where, you know, people get a taste of what athletic administration is like. And that's a hot field in today's environment. And we're just, to echo Scott, the leadership and the mentoring that you've provided is just second to none. And we're just very fortunate. And it's, it's a sad day, but an exciting day for what, what lies in store for you and how, how you'll continue to lead others.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right. Okay. Well, on that note, let's jump into some interesting stuff.
Courtney.
Can't wait to follow up on that. We all had a great spring break. I provided the February 28th, 2025 financial statements and check register for your review. As of February 28th, 2025, we have collected 82.1% of our budgeted ad valorem tax revenues compared to 100.4% we had received last year at this date. This variance is due to the timing of payments received from the county and city for property, property ad valorem taxes compared to last year. Hopefully, well, I'm not gonna say hopefully, I know we haven't caught up as of today, the end of March, so hopefully we'll have some better results at the end of April. In February, we earned $114,580 in interest income on our investment in Treasury suite. And our expenditures and transfers out of the general fund as of February 28th were 45.9% of the budget compared to 47.6% last year. All things being equal, in our fifth month of the fiscal year, we should be at 41%, 41.6% of our budget. And we're a little above that due to some annual payments that we have made. Our monthly financial check statements and check registers are available for viewing on our website upon board approval. And all bank accounts have been reconciled as of February 28th, 2025.
Thanks, Courtney. Board members, I recommend approval of financial statement for February 2025.
Per superintendent's recommendation to approve the financial statement for February 2025, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
On the favor?
Item six, I recommend the board approve consent items related to disposal of property in state, out of state, and out of state overnight field trips.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the disposal of board property even for in-state, out-state, and out-of-state overnight field trips. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
On the favor?
Nine. All right. Under business item, I is our first budget amendment, and I would recommend that a board approve this budget amendment.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the budget amendment number one. Do I hear a motion? Still moved. Do I hear a second?
Second. Courtney, just a little description of what's in this amendment.
Yes, so the budget amendment is required to true up our fund balance, the actual ending fund balances as of March 30, 2024. Because when we do the initial budget, it's sort of an estimated ending fund balance. So we have to bring it up to actual. And then we also had some state allocations that came in after the budget was presented. And we also had some expenditures that came in a little above what we originally budgeted for.
And the board's goal to maintain about a two-month reserve, where do you see this landing there?
I see it's landing right around two months, right now.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
All right. Item two, I recommend the board approve an emergency declaration for work on Vestavia Hills High School plumbing.
Per superintendent's recommendation to approve an emergency declaration for a plumbing project, do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second. All right. Board members, I'd like Mr. Boone to speak on this, but Dr. Navin has definitely made a splash, so to speak. In the first year at the high school, we got a significant break of a main sewer line that actually ran through the senior patio. Some of y'all familiar with that, portion of the middle, under the buildings at some point, as far as we know, it collapsed. I mean, it's original terracotta pipe, and we just know it could be collapsed. We were not able to move it any further once we tried to unclog. And so it required a, probably about a 300-foot line of new pipe to be run to go through the concrete in the middle. So it's a significant project. Of course, thankfully, we're insured, and that will cover our typical for this. But when you do a project that values over what the bid threshold requires, then there has to be some quick action taken. Mr. Boone?
This is a textbook situation about an emergency under the Alabama bid law. The legislature and the statutory law requires us to operate a safe school. Our mission statement says that we're gonna offer a nurturing and safe environment. And when this happened, Dr. Freeman telephoned me, "Do we have the green light?" I said, "If this isn't an emergency, I've never seen one in 57 years of law. Go for it."
Thank you.
All in favor?
Okay, item three, I recommend that the board rescind approval for bid on technology equipment.
Per superintendent's recommendation to rescind the bid approval for technology equipment, do I hear a motion? Still moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Board members, I'd like to dive into this a little bit. In December of this past year, you approved a bid for technology equipment that largely was around infrastructure, server upgrades. And the bid was done as part of an E-Rate share, which is federal dollars that come in the form of reimbursement for certain projects that meet criteria, servers do in fact do that. So we had essentially a match of federal dollars through E-Rate to cover this project that puts it under certain guidelines that E-Rate FCC requires that we do to meet bid specs. But it also is subject to Alabama bid law to make sure we do all those things appropriately. We did hire a consultant to review our bids prior to, and we did not get red flagged on anything. And so I brought that bid to you in December. There were some concerns raised about the bid itself after the board approved it. I then asked for some additional review of the bid specifications. And ultimately, the state of Alabama, Department of Education, and our E-Rate consultant both opened back up the bids, looked at them again, and said there were some technical errors that would likely disqualify us from rescinding E-Rate funding. I gave that to Mr. Boone and asked for his recommendation. Mr. Boone?
It's mandatory that we comply with Alabama bid law, with the state of Alabama. We hired an expert to carry us through this process because it was a pilot program through E-Rate, and it had some technical specifications. We hired an expert to guide us. The state and the expert said we've got some technicalities. When Dr. Freeman presented it to me, I just wrote a letter and said, "Rescind the bid. It's a felony to violate the Alabama bid law." And that's my recommendation. Bid it next year.
Questions, ladies?
If you get the same money, we'll be available next year.
We do. We did not use, we didn't use, good question, we didn't use all of, we didn't max out what it allowed, sort of been the max. So what we'll do is we'll put that server group with the next round we were gonna do, intentions to do that next budget fiscal year, and then still get our E-Rate.
All those in favor?
Item four, I recommend the board approve the bid for Duncan and Deereman Building Company in the amount of $629,347 for parking and drive improvements at Vestavia Hills High School.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear, sorry, per superintendent's recommendation to approve the bid for Duncan and Deereman Building Company for the parking and job improvements at the high school? Do I hear a motion? So let, do I hear a second?
Second. The project that we're talking about is adjacent to the tennis courts on campus. There is a house that used to house alternative school program for a number of years. It's been vacant for a little bit of time, but we would demolish that area. We have a significant amount of storm drainage controls going in. I actually believe that property will be better contained in terms of its storm drainages than it is now. That's part of the project, but it would ultimately give us 52 additional spots. And I think that's a welcome news to the campus. We do have, in the next couple of years, probably our largest number of kids will have on campus, and then it's gonna moderate back down a little bit. So this will help us at least with juniors and senior parking. Does a hurt on events as well, so that's the purpose behind the bid.
All those in favor?
And I do want to point out that this, the funds for this come from state supplemental funds and form advancement in technology dollars. We're able to do that when they send us supplemental funds like they have this past year. All right, item five, I recommend the board approve the contract Duncan and Deereman Building Company for the parking and drive improvements at Vestavia Hills High School.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the contract with Duncan and Deereman Building Company for the parking and job improvements at the high school? Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Item six, I recommend the board approve the bid for Williford Orman Construction LLC in the amount of $224,214 to repair the addition to dry storage at Posits Middle School.
Or you've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the bid for Williford Orman Construction in the amount of $224,214 to repair the addition to dry storage at Posits Middle School? Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second. The damage on this property was from a vehicle that ran into it after school activity. We, of course, are insured and expect that we'll get a large portion of this back. We did add a little bit more space for the cafeteria storage as part of this, but in large bars, we should get our dollars returned.
All those in favor?
Item seven, I recommend the board approve the contract for Williford Orman Construction LLC for repairing the dry storage at Posits Middle School.
Per the superintendent's recommendation to approve the contract for Williford Orman Construction to repair the dry storage at Posits Middle School? Do I hear a motion? So let, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Item eight, I recommend the board approve the job description for program coordinator of exceptional children.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve a job description for program coordinator of exceptional children? Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Do I hear a second?
Board members, currently, as you know, Dr. Ritchie is in the role of executive director for exceptional children. Her responsibilities are shifting some because of retirement, we'll speak of in a few minutes. But what we're gonna do is bring a coordinator in for the exceptional children program. And so we're not adding a position as much as we are changing some responsibilities right now, just wanna make that clear to you. But as the summer gets here, I'll provide more information about the overall organizational structure of our district office, but that's the shift we're making.
All those in favor?
Item nine, I recommend the board approve the job description for elementary math coach.
Per the superintendent's recommendation to approve the job description for elementary math coach, do I hear a motion? Still moved. Do I hear a second?
Board members, you know, we have five reading coaches that are provided through state funds. And in the last couple of years, the state has begun to have math coaches into elementary schools. And this year, we will qualify for two math coaches, providing the state funding that comes through. I would bring the recommendation to you to fill those positions sometime later on in the spring. I would anticipate the following year that we would add additional ones. We're coming in late as a school system because our math scores typically have been higher than most in the states, or we'll kind of last to be getting these. But we start with a phase in this year or two.
All those in favor?
Item ten, I recommend the board approve licensing agreement with Alabama Campus Pro LLC.
Per the superintendent's recommendation to approve a licensing agreement with Alabama Campus Pro LLC, do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second. Anything else you want to say on this?
Alabama Campus Pro is better known by their business name, Herf Jones. They provide graduation supplies and stationery for high school. And this is our 17th licensing agreement.
All those in favor?
Item 11, I recommend the board approve adoption of science textbooks.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the adoption of science textbooks? Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second. Brooke is here with us, this is Senior Wexler. Thanks for joining us. I asked, to get to a place where we recommend a textbook, would you just walk the board through the process, please?
Sure, yes. So our textbook committee assembled in September, and that's representatives from all of our schools as well as parent representatives. And then we began kind of looking through the options on the state list as well as other options, because with all of our science offerings at the high school AP courses, we have to look at different options for those as well. So once they, we kind of, you know, started acquiring samples, having teachers and schools browse through the samples. And once the state board approved their list, which happened in December, and we kind of, then, you know, sped up the process. For elementary, all of our schools narrowed down their choices. And then we allowed them the opportunity to go back and review the top three and then make their selections for those. Middle school kind of narrowed theirs down to two, and then thoroughly reviewed those to finally decide on one. And then our high school teachers attended the textbook caravan in, I think it was early February, and also looked at college board recommendations for the AP courses. And through all of that process, finally were able to make their final decisions. So throughout the process, our textbook committee would meet usually about every month or two to kind of, you know, talk about where we were in the process. And then we had our final meeting in March where we reviewed all of the selections and voted to approve what we have for you to vote.
It's a very lengthy process. The standards are approved to start with by the state. And then there's a year that the selection process occurs. Because curriculum is a local board decision, this is where we are. The standards are set by the state, and the curriculum in terms of how we teach, the standards is decided by the Board of Education. And we use that process for a textbook committee, so it's inclusive of a lot of different people. So I appreciate the work on that. Once this is approved, then we order the textbooks. The state pays for a portion of these. They don't pay for the whole thing, unfortunately, so we have to, I don't know if that totally is, but it's significantly more than the state gives us. But we'll take care of that, make sure our kids have textbooks. So anything else you want to add? Do anything? Brooke, thank you.
All those in favor?
Just as a point of information, one of the requirements in a new law that we have is that we provide this information to the public within 30 days. And so that will show up on our website. We'll have all these things posted as it relates to the curriculum and complying with the law. All right. Item 12, I recommend the board approve the principal contract for Cynthia Echols.
Per superintendent's recommendation to approve the principal contract for Cynthia Echols, do I hear a motion? Still moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Item 13, I recommend the board approve the principal contract for Dory Hardy.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the principal contract for Dory Hardy, do I hear a motion? Still moved. Do I hear a second? All those in favor?
Congratulations, Dory. Item 14, I recommend the board approve the principal contract for Susan McCall.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the principal contract for Susan McCall? Do I hear a motion? Still moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Congratulations, Susan. All right. Item 15, I recommend the board approve the principal contract for Kim Paulson.
Per the superintendent's recommendation to approve the principal contract for Kim Paulson, do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Congratulations, Kim. Board members, we've got stellar principals, and I'm very proud to work with them. I'm proud that you're principals of my kids and your kids and our kids in our community that do such fantastic jobs. So very thankful to have them. Thank you for approving these. The law requires that once, say, principals go through a non-provationary period, then they automatically go upon your boat into a three-year non-provationary. So that's the position these contracts are in.
Glad to have you all. I was very pleased to be able to spend a little time with each of the principals. All, I guess we've got four here today. Cannot be more impressed with the leadership of our schools and what they're doing. And I want you to know that we're here for you, obviously. And if y'all have anything to make for the board, please let us know.
All right. Personnel, I recommend the board approve personnel items as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation to approve the personnel items as submitted, do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
We're gonna move to administrative reports, and I'm gonna tee her up, okay, for you. Dr. Rainey's walking up the way, we didn't practice. Dr. Rainey's walking up. We might have to talk about you, Dr. Rainey. Dr. Rainey's on the list of directors that you approved tonight. Mr. Boone, want to make some comments?
As with Coach Miles, it's bittersweet to see the retirement on this list and to approve it. Last five years, I guess now, I'm glad to see you at work, and the consummate behind-the-scenes professional that is required for us to be excellent across the board. There are so many people and events that are high-profile, and that's great. They enjoy that. Sometimes being high-profile is not so great. But what I've seen is that you were there to make sure that our academics meet the standards that the community expects. It's not always easy. It's not always one that there's a spotlight on. But you've done it with grace and with never a look at me, look what we're doing. But just every day in, day out, it's just excellence. And we're gonna miss you. We've been fortunate to have you serve, and just as I said with Coach Miles, we're better off for you having been a part of our system. And we appreciate all that you've invested into our schools and into our students, and we know that their education is better because you were there behind the scenes, making sure that we meet that promise to provide them an excellent education as they want to do.
There are a lot of things that Amy did for our system, and many things still to notice, but gosh, it was your first year, and you had been only in this position about a year when we had the chef's school down in March of 2020. And then try to develop in a matter of weeks some way to survive the next couple of months at home and try to continue learning. And I just asked Amy to take it and go, and she did, put together a plan for us that worked out. People, we got a lot of people, got a lot of opinions, and there are a lot of experts about what we did and didn't do, but our kids continue to thrive academically, and there's reasons for that, the leadership in our schools and the direction we were given. So that's just one of many things. The expansion of the gifted program at the middle schools is another big accomplishment, I think, that we've yielded benefits from. The fact that all of our middle school kids can take some advanced courses beginning in sixth grade is a big step for our district. And so that's just a couple of, a lot of things I can share with you. I think for significant legacy-type things that Amy has done, and she's done it with character, and she's done it from a very caring place. And it's not easy to do what she does. And unless you do it, you can't appreciate the difficulty that comes from me asking an assistant superintendent to do some very difficult, uncomfortable things. And she's done it with grace, and I appreciate that. So well done. Congrats.
Thank you.
Thanks for being there on Vestavia campaign. We're still working a lot of those facilities and trying to upgrade and advance those, but you brought about just the emphasis and the enthusiasm for the programs that we were also going after. And I just, I really appreciate that. Each time you got up there and promoted different ones, it's just, it brought pride in what we have to offer and what we want to offer and what we're gonna continue to strive to offer. But you just did a beautiful job of bringing that to light and really showing our community what we can be proud of. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And this report is maybe not as glamorous as it seems, instructional partners, etc., but it still is some important work to kind of finish up on. And Amy's second to lead on this related governance and AI, so I wanted you to hear a little bit about that as we finish up this evening.
Well, thank you for the comments, and I just want to say that, like Myra, this has just been the best part of the journey of my career, and not only as an assistant superintendent and employee of Vestavia Hills, which has been a tremendous honor and privilege to be able to serve in this role, but also as a parent of a graduate from Vestavia Hills City Schools. I am invested and will always be invested, as we say, once rebel, always a rebel. So I will always be a rebel. So tonight, I had the opportunity to just share with you what we've been doing around the topic of AI. And so I will talk about AI, but know that when I say that, it's not just the traditional AI, but it's also generative AI. And so the traditional AI, as you know, basically takes data that's already there and compiles it. But generative AI, it has the ability to create new text, images, videos, music. And so this idea of being able to create these additional things with generative AI. So really, you know, as we are moving into this age of AI, we wanted to take a deeper dive and see what does this mean for our school district? You know, what do we need to consider? What do we need to be thoughtful about? And so when we were thinking about this, we developed a task force. And so this task force, we looked at the opportunities that AI provides for not only our employees, but for our students. And so personalized learning, when we think about it, and we had some different people on our committee, we had some parents who represented different areas of our school district, and one of those was exceptional ed, because with AI, that really gives us an opportunity to be able to do some more personalized learning that maybe we haven't been able to undo as fast or as efficient as AI provides for us. And so one of the things was personalized learning. Operational efficiency. How can we do things better, quicker, more efficiently? And then data-driven decisions. We know we have so much data out there, it allows us to be able to look at that data in a much more quick and efficient manner. And so we developed a task force, and our task force has 33 members on it. And this task force is comprised of administrators, teachers, parents, business leaders in our community. And so by all of these people coming together, and we meet every other month, and on the off-month, we have subcommittees who meet. And so this was just a little snippet of our meetings for the year, and you could see the big committee we met, we met every other year, I mean, every other month. And then the subcommittees, they met on those off-maths. And the purpose of the subcommittees was, you know, we always want to know, what's the why? We have to have a purpose, not just a new shiny tool for the purpose of having a shiny tool, but what is the purpose? And so we go back to what always guides our work, and the purpose is our three district goals. So when we looked at, as a task force, what could we do? How would we want to use AI? We looked at it through the lens in our purpose. So of course, that is student achievement. How can AI help us reach our goal for student achievement? And then we looked, another subcommittee was formed to look at shared leadership. How can we use AI to help us reach our goal for shared leadership? And finally, structures and processes. How can AI help us more efficiently reach our goal for structures and processes? And there are a lot of different considerations, but namely, when we hear about AI, we want to make sure that we are looking at those ethical considerations. And so we did a lot, a deep dive into And so we did a lot, a deep dive into these different areas and we learned together. And then we also shared out on how we need to make sure that we are keeping these at the forefront of what we're doing. We want to make sure that we have human-centered values, equitable access to whatever tools we may be using. We want to make sure, and it's critical to have the privacy protection, the safety things in place. And then we, I'll get you to scroll just so I'm not sure why it's not completely on the screen. But if you, there we go. And finally, data integrity. We want to make sure that as we look at how we're using AI, that we don't lose focus and these things are, remain a priority. And so there are a lot of different applications. Many of the things that we use because AI is developing so rapidly, a lot of the tools that we already have, those companies are developing different pieces that involve AI. And so we wanted to look at applications and we did a survey and I'll talk about that in a minute. So one of our goals is at the end of this year, we hope to have a list that we vetted, that the committee has discussed, looking through the lens of all these things that I'm talking about tonight. And then our data governance committee, that they have approved to make sure it meets all the purpose and for all the compliance standards that are needed, that we can share with our staff, our teachers and our staff members to say, these are some tools that we vetted. And we know that, again, so many people are using tools, it's in our products, but we're going to be able to develop a list that we can feel like we have vetted through our district. So we know with that and with AI in general, there are some leadership imperatives. And so as we're thinking and designing, creating the plan for how we will use AI in our school district, we want to make sure that we have AI literacy. And so one of the key takeaways that as a committee we've learned this year is that beginning with next school year, we will have a module in Mobile Minds that all employees do at the beginning of the year on AI literacy. We also will have ethical guidelines that we will make sure that that's covered in our data governance, that we have those ethical guidelines laid out. We want to foster an adaptive culture because really, technology moves so quickly and especially with what we've seen with AI, it is moving so rapidly. So we want to make sure that we prepare and that we prepare our folks for the, to have the capacity for this adaptive culture. And then finally, we want to make sure that we are ensuring equitable access. As you study the research with AI, some of the tools that can be used when you look at the research, if you're not careful, those tools can really create more discrimination between certain subgroups. For example, there are some tools that allow teachers to use, to look for, the word just left behind, to look for.
Pleasureism?
Pleasureism. Yes, thank you. To look, it's such a simple word and it just totally left my mind. For pleasureism. And what we have found and what research shows is that some of those tools can over-identify students who are in our EL population. And it can inaccurately flag them. So we want to make sure, things like that, that's what the committee's been talking about because we want to make sure that we are aware, we're knowledgeable, and we're not doing things to create inequity. And then our district's approach, we formed the SADU task force. We've been meeting all year. Again, there are thirty-three members on that task force involving administrators, teachers, parents, community members and business leaders. We have a data governance committee that runs alongside of what we've been doing. The committee will come up with issues that they want us to present to the data governance committee. Brandon Lovelady, he oversees that committee. And so then that committee looks at the things. And so they will, I think maybe this summer, we'll have a policy to bring to you. And then also just the alignment with district goals. Like I said, we always have to look back at our purpose, why we're doing something. And it has to, it has to align to our district goals. And if it doesn't, then we don't want to, we don't want to use it. I've talked about our key reflections. Our journey is a three-step process. Really, we're hoping to lay a foundation. We know that it will require strategic implementation and then it'll be an ongoing process. And so finally, again, we will have training for all employees and that's to lay that foundation so that they understand more about AI. We don't want to assume anything. And so we'll provide this training for all employees at the beginning of next school year. The data governance committee will be looking for, through the lens of purpose. They'll have a security focus and a scope. We'll have a policy this summer from then. Our guiding principles, ethical use, human oversight, data privacy and transparency. And that's what we've done with AI in the SADU Hills City Schools. And this is our vision for the future. And when we think about how we want to see our future with AI, we want to be able to incorporate it, again, to be able to have that excellence in our academics. We want to make sure that we're doing it in a safe way. We want our students to be safe using AI. We also want to make sure everyone's data and privacy is protected. We want to be able to do things efficiently. And so AI allows us to do that. We want to be able to do things efficiently. And we know that together, we're building a future where technology elevates education while preserving what matters most and that meaningful human relationships. Any questions?
Will this group ultimately have a recommendation for how AI is used or not used in the classroom? It sounds like there's a lot of this related to how the system would use it, which is, I mean, obviously, we'll be playing on that. Will this also be addressing, well, how we expect teachers to be using AI or not to be using AI in the classroom?
So like I said, it's a three-step process. What we've done this year is to try to lay the foundation, talk about what AI could provide, the potential of AI and the risk of AI, looking through our three district goals. And so we will have, as part of laying that foundation, we will have a policy this summer. We will provide training to our staff members on the use of AI and our expectations. We will have a list of approved applications for them to be able to use. And then the second and third step of the complete picture of the process is the second step would be that strategic implementation. And the third step would be ongoing monitoring. And so we're taking it step by step. We won't have a list of, I mean, we'll have a list of things that we've approved, but we know, we sent out a survey. Let me, I'll just back up because we knew people were using AI, that it's so accessible. We wanted to get an idea of the landscape. And so we sent in the fall a survey to all of our employees. We had eighty-nine responses. That was not a huge response group, but at least it gave us an idea of the landscape. And when we saw what the majority of our employees were using it for, it's like ChatGPT, Claude, Magic School. There were only about, I think, maybe twenty-three in that neighborhood, somewhere around twenty-three applications that came back on our surveys. And out of the twenty-three, there were certain ones that were used multiple times. And those were the big ones, ChatGPT, Claude and Magic School. And so we hope to be able to provide that list that we've approved and said it's safe to use these applications. But there's a lot of work still to be done. And so as far as guidance for teachers in the classroom, that's what the Mobile Minds modules will hopefully be able to provide. It won't have like a list of things to do or, I mean, that they can use, but it will have precautions, how to use it safely, what not to do, what information that you shouldn't enter into generative AI. And it will also give some things like, with generative AI, it pulls from any sources that are out there. They can be accurate or not. We talk about hallucinations with AI. And so we just want to make sure that our employees know and have a basic understanding of even what it is, how to use it, how to be safe with it. So that's kind of where we are. Was that the question or?
No, no, I think that's great. I mean, I think I'm thrilled we're looking at this. I mean, I know it's, there's a lot of changes in the business world, the digital world, education, I'm sure as well, in terms of how we use AI, what are permissible uses, how it can both benefit, but also how perhaps it can keep folks from progressing if you're too dependent on it. And what does that look like in the future? Generations ago, we were told, don't use calculators because we won't be able to do math, right?
Right.
And now everybody uses a calculator all the time. And trying to project where that's going to go can be difficult, but I'm glad we're looking at it.
And I will say, we've had a lot of people do a lot of research and studying on AI in our school district. A lot of our administrators have been involved. Also, we are looking at best practices. School districts that are already like in full implementation, where you're studying best practices from other places to help kind of guide our work too. Any other questions?
I just don't, I'm being an English teacher myself, folks, and AI. I mean, it's probably so difficult because like you said, a brave student could write a really impressive paper and you run it through the software and someone could say it's so well-written that the student could possibly have written it up themselves that they might actually have. And so you're trying to discern, again, accuracy with AI and pleasureism. I think that's what I've heard the most is kids being accused of using something when they might not have. Which I think it's just, the question has to be asked. And again, people need to know how to use them safely. But we're all kind of learning as we go.
And that drives another conversation, it's the need for authentic assessments. So when we, when we have to think through those things, we also have to think through, well, how can we, if this can happen, what are some other ways that we can look at student work to measure their learning and standard? So what are some authentic assessments that may not be as lengthy, but can give you a glimpse into the actual purpose of the student can do that for them? Big topic.
I have a lot of confidence though, our teachers have liked to speak to this. I know some English teachers I spoke to that I know do a great job. I mean, they're really on top of this, how to manage, making sure work is truly student work, but also not ignoring the fact that this is out there, which I appreciate. They're taking a really good approach to it, but really knowing what a student's writing look like and how to diagnose that. So it's fascinating just to talk with them, but they're in tune and which I'm appreciative of. I think the guardrail work that comes out of this might be the most important thing just so, because it is so expansive, or at least I heard folks have guardrails to work with. Because tomorrow, there'll be new technologies, we didn't know today. And that's the way it's always going to be moving forward.
And we want our students not to be afraid of it because when they go out in the real world, they're going to have to use it. So to be certain, we can teach them how to ethically use it and how it can supplement your knowledge and your work. But also, you said, in trying to make sure that we're assessing their work and not checking into his work.
Oh, absolutely. And I probably didn't highlight that enough, but that was a big conversation with the AI task force as well, is to make sure that we're equipping with our students with the skills they need to be able to use AI efficiently, effectively and ethically.
As I said, I think the, just the knowledge out there, that AI gets it wrong sometimes. Jay runs well, we hear about, somebody sells a brief that cites cases that do exist.
Yes.
It's, well, you know, AI told me that this was a good case. Well, yeah, as you say, AI is only as good as the information that's being plugged into it. And so, of course, students often recognize that. Just because that's what comes back doesn't mean that's actually true.
Right.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. Is there anybody here for a helpful comment? If none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I hear a motion? So moved. Second.
Second.
All those.